I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He wanted to amend the agenda.
I want to make a motion to amend the agenda.
What was that?
I would like to move the minutes up to in front of remarks of public.
Motion to move. Second.
So you want to move them?
Yeah, we're just changing your order. Alright, move second. Roll call. Vote.
Okay, Councilman Thomas, present. Councilwoman Graham.
Yay, yay, yay.
I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out what are the minutes and.
Right, you must press the minutes.
Oh, yay.
Yeah.
How are you?
I'm great, how are you?
Councilwoman Graham. Councilwoman King.
Yay.
And Councilor, President Miller.
Yeah. Okay, we're on to the, uh, so now notice, so we have the approval of minutes. Anybody can copy the minutes? Try to read, read your. If I get a motion to amend it?
No move.
Move, same. Move to second.
Second.
Alright. Both approve the minutes, call the roll please.
Councilwoman Thomas, yay. Councilwoman Graham, yes. Councilwoman King.
Yay.
President Miller.
Yeah. Alright, remarks of the public, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not one question. Uh, this time, have y'all publicized this in any paper or notifying the public of what y'all doing with this, with these, uh, items that y'all want to junk or whatever. Have y'all done that? I mean notify the people that you all going to do this. Because before when y'all did it, y'all did it illegal with those cars. So I just want to know if y'all doing the same thing. Yes, sir, I just want to ask a question, can you answer?
It's noted, your question's been noted.
I haven't been answered.
Thank you.
How many y'all getting up here now, y'all all of a sudden y'all want to run today?
Any other, any other comment? Just items on. Alright. Report is the announcements from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly appreciate councils getting together, nice to see everybody. The items on the agenda, just a brief response to the general statement that was made about the items as far as the city disposing of items that are no longer needed or obsolete or sometimes considered junk. Cities do these things from time to time, things that were bought 20 years ago, some cases 10 years ago, other cases five years ago, are of no use now. And this meeting and council's action and the ordinance that would be passed, whether you choose to do that tonight or at a subsequent meeting, is perfectly good notice to the community and anybody who would be interested. Those who see the agenda and see the legislation would also see that there is an itemized list of the pieces of equipment, of the computer equipment, that is, uh, that is up for being gotten written of, gotten rid of. They are older computers, older printers, maybe a router or two, things that aren't used by the city anymore. And anybody who's willing to look at those is certainly welcome to do so. And if they want to purchase it, make some sort of offer, that's fine. And Claude, our director of information technology, is here tonight, he personally compiles the list.
See, I have all the pieces.
And, and he has some of the pieces here tonight in the building if anybody wants to see them. So thank you again, council, for doing the normal things that a normal city does and doing these things before you may have, and you can engage in all the processes and processes.
Thank you. Reports, go council members. Councilwoman Thomas.
I am the chair of the first of the maintenance committee. And, um, this is a, uh, a new assignment for me. And I will be, um, having a meeting shortly. That meeting will be posted and announced. We have a, um, some dates that usually, um, the committees will be. The individuals that sit on my committee is, um, um, Councilor Nathaniel Martin and Councilor Julie Graham, and my collective. Okay, so I think there was a, there was a tentative, um, quote from me that it would be on 26th. It's still tentative, we have to make sure that everybody will be there and there's some information that I will be given. That is what I have to add.
Thank you.
Did everybody hear me?
Not really.
So yeah, for the meeting.
Can conclude your report? Councilwoman Graham.
Okay, well, I'm on General Services and, um, that committee has yet to meet, it meets at 22:00. So that would also be on the 26th at 5:00.
Thank you. Councilwoman King.
Thank you, Council President. I am the chair of the Finance Committee, or the former chair of the Best Committee on Council, which is the General Services Committee. And I'd like to do a follow-up. If council will have it, as to one of the pieces that we've worked on through the General Services Committee. And the gentleman, Pastor Proo, is actually here to do that. So if council will indulge, I mean, could Pastor, give you an update on what's going on with Helenus Brown?
I have a problem with that, we can take three minutes and explain it, update us.
You know, for a preacher, three minutes is one more time.
In case you want to pass those out to the public, thank you.
Can I say something, say this? Here, the chair of the, um, the committee, who's the chair?
General Services.
General Services, okay, have you all collaborated?
This is noted, this is noted.
I understand this already.
We can take care of all that.
I'm just asking a question, and I think I had that right to answer.
I know.
Yeah, but, okay, thank you.
I do have some pictures of some of the things we've done, we thank council for giving us a few minutes and we thank council for putting some faith in us and giving us an opportunity to do the things that we've been able to do at Helenus Brown. Kind of want to give you an update as to where we are. We spent at this point about $30,000 in the rehab of that building. We anticipated initially when we came to council, we spent about 10, but we found out that that was not the case. We have completely replaced the entire heating system. We came in with the understanding that we had a repairable system, we determined that it was not repairable. So now the building has a complete heating and air conditioning system, which cost us about approximately 16,000, $17,000. We had to buy a new transformer to transform the three, four-phase electric to three-phase electric, so that cost us about $5,000 to do that. But now the building is completely up to code as it relates to heating and air, far more than what we expected to do, but we were managed to do it by donations, raising money and all that we've done. We ran into significant problems that related to plumbing. We did not understand it would take us six months to identify the plumbing problem. So we have torn out walls, we've torn out floors, we've torn out ceilings to repair the plumbing. We finally got the plumbing to the place where the building is usable. We have used the building over this period of time. We've kind of did a guerrilla style, you know, kind of carrying buckets after service to flush toilets, but we made the commitment we were there. In the interim, in the midst of all that, we've served the community. At this point, according to our records, we can verify about 500 meals that we have given out that were signed for, we actually give out about 120 meals a month. We have about 50 people who will sign up for the meals. We do blood pressure checks, we've probably done probably 200 or 300 blood pressure checks. Some people will sign, some people won't, we've done that on an ongoing basis. We've done, we've given food under direction of council. We came to other community groups and organizations in this neighborhood, we've given and donated foods that we have, we have done counseling, we have done diabetes counseling, we have partnered with FAL group to continue and to invest more greatly in our diabetes counseling. And we've done all this in the midst of trying to manage heat, trying to manage water. And so we have made a significant investment in building. I have presented what we've done to the mayor, I've presented what we've done to Councilman King. The mayor's going to be a viewer of the building in the next few days. We would like to also invite council to come out and see the investment and the work that we've done in the building. I think we've done more than what we said we were going to do, but when we got in, we made the commitment, we raised the money, we got some friends that helped us. I think the council will be very, very pleased in what we've done with the building. One of our issues that we're going to come back to council with is we spent $20,000 more than we thought we would spend, so we basically exhausted our funds. Not to say we're broke, not to say we're going to leave next week, not to say we can't pay our light and gas, we're paying all that, but our budget is in a whole different shape. So when we come back to council, looking at probably possibility of getting some kind of extension of the abatement that we had, so we could at least get through the balance of the winter and kind of recover some funds, but we want council to see that no matter what happens, you know, whenever the building changes, we've left council and this city in a place that they were not, they were not when we came in the building. We have adequate documentation, we have pictures, we have the building, that the council will be able to see, everything that we've done. I have some pictures here. Okay, thank you, sir. Of some of the community feedings we've done, we'll pass this out to council. These are actual pictures of us doing community feeding and the other things that we've done. I know I can't get a lot out in three minutes, I think I've got quite a bit out. We'll be looking to come back to council and with more documentation and see if we can get some kind of agreement going on in that building. We thank you so much for your time, thank you for Councilman King and the mayor and everyone that's helped us so much.
What's Reverend's name?
Proo, that's the Proo. Proo, yeah.
Proo.
It's been messed up many times, it was okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good to see you, Joe.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you, clues, Mary.
President, thank you.
And council, first.
I got to go to Bible study.
Amen.
Is that okay?
We have Bible study on.
Thursday night, yes, Saturday. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm the chair of the Contract and Properties and, uh, we've been getting acclimated in the office, trying to get the office together, so we have to handle committee meetings. We'll start next month, we're going to be aggressive, making sure that the calendar for the month be out, so everybody knows when the committee meetings will be held and where at. And prepare with us because there's transition going on in the office. We're trying to make it more efficient, more transparent, just bear with us, in another week or so, we should be running smoothly. And that concludes my report. Legislation number 0116.
Resolution number 116. A resolution authorizing the disposal of non-functional obsolete computer equipment that is no further, of no further use to the city through competitive bidding to individuals and dealers and if none of, not as forthcoming to junk pursuant to appropriate health and safety regulations in order to provide for safe access upon city workspaces. Requested by the IT department, sponsored by Council President Thomas J. Wheeler.
Council President, this is your name, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to move that we pass the resolution 0116. Move forward, get ready for the adjustment table.
We have a second. Second.
I second that.
We have a second, we'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I asked before, um, is there an organization that is going to purchase? Who should I address, mister?
No.
That's what I asked, who should I address? Okay, is there an organ, okay, oh, no. Is there an organization who is going to purchase this or how are we going to get rid of this? And how, is there, um, monies coming out of this and how much?
Uh, you know, we put out these things for bid, in a lot of cases Claude will send this same sheet to interested individuals, certainly if there's a church or nonprofit organization that you want to do. This is just giving us the permission to sell it if we can, donate it to somebody if we can, we'll just really just throw it away. But every city property, every piece of city property that is transferred in some way, shape or form, whether it's a table like this or a piece of land or a building, the city's property must first receive the authority from city council in order to get rid of it. So this is whatever the most productive way is, if we can sell it, we certainly like to sell it. If we can give it to somebody that can use it, we'll give it to somebody that can use it. If nobody wants to buy it or wants to use it, then we go it away. So I hope that answers the question, we will solicit people, Claude certainly has a list of folks that he'll send out to, and if there's any organization that you want to.
I don't think that that answered my question. And I think that before, I mean, all this was done, we had specific areas that we were going to, that was going to be dealing with, uh, pieces of equipment like this. And I would like to hear, I heard from you, Mr. Mayor. And the purpose of having Claude here is to have him to explain to us.
The explanation's probably not going to change. Okay, so that's fine, as, as long, as long as Claude is here.
I think.
I'm, I'm, I'm now, I got to go now, so as long as Claude is here.
My speech, when I'm, I'm, if the mayor is saying to me what I can and what I can't do. Okay, and I might get this and I might get that, now if you will hit the gavel and say something constructive to me, I'll, I'll accept that.
Okay, here we go. Since Claude did take the time to come out, I have no problem giving Claude the floor to address your concern. So Claude, if you would please.
I have some of your equipment out here.
Please bring a piece in, please.
I also have a question, a lot of the, I understand that some of the, the hardware, I was wondering if the, the software can't be updated. All right, so.
This is a piece, one of the printers that's on the scrap list. As you can see, this is of no use.
I'm going to lift it up, see.
Okay. With the damage?
Y'all always like that, y'all always like that for a while.
The mayor's got the vocals. And if you would like, go outside in the hallway, there's a lot of it, and this is of this condition. It's no selling this, it is take it to a environmentally safe scrap dealer and they take it and do what they do with it.
Say that one more time.
Environmentally.
An environmentally certified.
You can't just put it in the garden.
No, no, absolutely not. Certain things are consumables, keyboards, mice, that sort of thing.
Wait, wait, computer mice.
Yes, mice. No. Um, but something of this nature and anything with a circuit board in it is not environmentally, you can't just throw it in the dumpster.
So, still on my question, still on my question. So what is the process that you deal with the environmental, environment?
Because we turned this, this equipment over to an environmentally certified dealer, we don't have to worry about it getting caught in the landfill and getting traced back to us.
No, 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 my question is, is there a specific dealer? Or is there dealers that are, that you do turn it over, that, that is the process? So do you have dealers that you, that is expecting to, to receive this equipment?
Well, no one's expecting to, but we have, in the last few times we did this, there's a company called East Scrap Solutions down off, behind Gordon Park.
And so we just, we just, they come and get it or we take it?
No, we take it to them.
It's not promised to anybody, Claude?
No.
We're not sure how.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you the question, I don't need you to answer the question. Please, I don't need, I'm talking focus. Um, so what you're saying to me is that you take the equipment down to the, the person, that area, and they take that and they give you a receipt for what you have turned in?
Uh, not necessarily a receipt, a certification letter that says it was disposed of per EPA and so on and so forth.
That's what I want to hear, okay? So everybody knows the process and where it's going and that it's not generating any money for the city. It's just junk that you can't, we can't, it's not usable anymore, it's antiquated and it's gone.
Or damaged, yes.
Yeah, and you just can't dump it over and take it out and put it in the dumpster. It's all of this equipment, this is not worth it anymore.
Well, but some of it, if somebody's willing to buy it, Claude, you'll sell it to them, right?
Yeah, it's, it's useless and I'll be back in a few more weeks, we've gotten other things as we've been placing, so there'll be more in a couple of weeks. But this was the first batch in the hallway that people were stumbling over, we got to get it out.
Are there any further questions? Just, just one, and then.
Well, it's not enough, okay?
I'm sorry, I thought you were, go ahead, you have more?
No, I said nothing from me.
For, just for the newest member of council, um, again, any piece of property that belongs to the city, no matter what condition it's in, in order to transfer it from the ownership of the city to someplace else, even if it's to throw it away, we need the permission of council in some way or some way.
Okay, any further discussion? Are you satisfied?
Thank you, Claude.
Can we call?
Thank you, Claude, I appreciate it.
Can we call?
Okay, uh, Councilman Thomas, yay. Councilwoman Graham, yes. Councilwoman King.
Yay.
And Reverend Miller.
Yay. Resolution number 10116 is passed. I'll keep the gavel, we'll go to resolution number 02-16. Can you read the resolution?
Hey, resolution number 02-16. A resolution authorizing the East Cleveland City Council to engage Legacy Communication LLC in a one-year, $20,000 contract to provide video, audio, and television production services for the city of East Cleveland by, sponsored by City Council Request, um, Council President Thomas J. Wheeler and Vice President Brianne Delk.
Council President, this is your name, what's your pleasure?
After further discussion, um, with, uh, some of council, at this time, I would like to go ahead and send this back to committee and table it.
You recommend it?
Go back to committee.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Have to go.
Any further discussion on this?
No.
So, resolution, okay, call the roll please.
Councilman Thomas, uh, yay. Councilwoman Graham, yay. Councilwoman King.
Yay.
And President Miller.
Yeah.
A resolution 02-16 has been sent back to committee. I will now pass the gavel back to our council president.
Resolution number 0316.
Resolution number 0316, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sell a certain and applicable surplus Public Service Department vehicle through competitive bidding to individuals and dealers and declaring an emergency for the public welfare and safety requested by the service department and sponsored by Councilwoman Julie Graham.
On, on this, uh, on this, on this, it's a resolution here, uh, I have to write the bullet on this one. I was putting it together and, uh, this should went to committee, so I would like to. Oh, sorry, so I, we should, we should, we should, yeah, I'm sorry, we should write it.
Well, yes, um, I think it should go back to committee for further discussion. You want to add this, let me add another? Yeah, so I recommend it go back to, uh, to committee.
I'll say.
Make a motion.
I'll say.
I just told you to make a motion, Claude. And I think you don't need to advise our council.
Uh, every little bit helps.
I know, every little bit helps.
Some people are so rough.
I know.
It's the move, it's the move, it's the move, it's the move, second, all the roll. Any further discussion?
No.
Councilman Thomas, yay. Councilwoman Graham, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So right there, if you would like to commit. Remarks and requests of the public.
Uh, Terry et al. 145.
One second, one second, sorry, nobody, Councilman Martin is here? Okay, sorry about that.
Uh, Terry et al. 145, 145th Road, East Cleveland, Ohio. Uh, what Claude was saying in regards, and the mayor was saying, dealing with throwing trash away. A number of years ago, I think it was on PBS, where the United States of America was throwing this junk and stuff in Africa and contaminating folks. And that, that debacle in Flint, Michigan is off the charts. And it was, it was big enough to go evidently worldwide, contaminating, going, using our stuff and going and putting our junk into their property and making people sick in other countries. So it is important where you put that junk.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Down on 150 O8 Terrace Road. You know, I'm very shocked at the way you all are operating now. And I can promise you all, I can't leave this city right now, but I'm going to work like hell to get this council changed. Because the way this council is going now, doing it like they want to do, like it's a dictatorship, I just don't like it. You understand, that thing y'all can do, smooth it out, even though you're going to do wrong things. Make you think that you're trying to do right. From my understanding, I don't know, there was no notification or the hiring of council clerk. Y'all just went and did it. I don't, I mean, maybe y'all did, but I wasn't aware of, I don't know how y'all did. Just three of y'all decided to do it and y'all do it. If y'all had did it the proper way, notification and going out and interviewing people and doing it like it should have been done, you still could have did the same thing.
What three?
No, 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 no.
You three. That's what I'm talking about. You three.
He has the floor, this kid was talking.
Yeah, I, hey, I'm not, I'm not just saying, because that's the way it is and that's the way y'all operate.
That's right.
You know, everybody can see that, even your child can see that. You know, yeah, we know, everybody in here ain't no fool, y'all think we are. Some of us may be, but I'm not, you know, but I'm going to work like the devil to get this council, where y'all are, I'm going to get it tried, as long as I live in this city, to get this changed. And y'all can believe that, you know.
You can't help it, Mr. Hall.
If you, if you want to entertain an outside conversation, then you can conclude your statement.
That's my, that was one of my problems. You want everybody to respect you, but you supposed to respect us.
I was going to stop interrupting you so you can finish your, I was telling them not to interrupt you so you can finish your comments.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, sir. You know, just let me do it.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, but I'm going to work like the devil. You know, but I'm gonna work like the devil. This time, we're gonna be successful in breaking this link between the three of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Tiffany Fisher. Good evening, mayor, our, um, community. Um, Tiffany Fisher on Alder Avenue. Um, as I usually do, I just wanna come in, uh, briefly, let you all know the students that we took to the Capitol Conference a few months ago that I came and, um, shared with you all. Um, they made the magazine that goes for the State of Ohio School Board Association. Other than five, um, regions, our, our school district, um, the jazz band Progeny were the only performing band that was pictured in the magazine, which is called The Journal. Um, I only have the one copy, I'm sorry, I promised it to Mister Anthony Price, who's, who is a senior, um, this year at Shaw High School. Um, so that's one good thing. We've also, um, well, the schools, school have had, um, several meetings about bringing different, more programming into the schools, to better, better the schools. Um, also, if you know any youth, and this goes for the community as well, any youth that are considering college, even for our juniors, not just our seniors, and, um, I would even say even for the children under that age, but it's very important for the juniors and seniors, remind them that those financial aid applications need to go in this month so they can get as much, um, help with their finances as they possibly can. Um, and to get out here and don't forget to fill out scholarships. Um, I would like to also welcome my new, um, councilperson, Miss Graham. I hadn't been at the previous, last few period, previous meeting. And, um, I just wanna welcome her, 'cause I am one of your residents, and thank you very much, Council.
Put it, put it, kiss.
Amazing, Sister Rock and Road, dealing with, uh, that's a deal with me.